It's on.
Good evening, everyone. Last December twenty twenty-one, Brookhaven Borough Council meeting in Combeburg, please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does your main standing?
Yep, please remain standing for a moment of silence for our deceased residents for the month of August twenty twenty-one. John Bogan Senior, Frank Naples, Melissa Bruchek, Gal Lerner. Thank you.
Mr. Wilber producer roll call, please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Heller.
President.
Mrs. Spooks.
Here.
Mrs. Heller.
President.
Mayor Leslie.
President.
Mr. Vasquez is here.
Ms. Suiki.
Here.
Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Gilroy.
President.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Wilber, Mr. Pughill.
Here.
Chief Montella.
Here.
Chief Vice.
Here.
Completes her role.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Ford has back-to-school answers she will have been able to attend, which takes us into public discussion. Before a public discussion, I have a resolution to read. Proclamation to read, sorry. Whereas suicidal thoughts, much like mental health conditions, can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, or background, suicide is often a result of an untreated mental health condition. Suicidal thoughts, although common, should not be considered normal and often indicate more serious issues. And whereas throughout the month of September of twenty twenty-one, the National Alliance on Mental Health will highlight Together for Mental Health, which encourages people to bring their voices together to advocate for better mental health, which is care included in crisis response system. Wants any person experiencing suicidal thoughts or behaviors to have a number to call, a system to turn to that will connect them to treatment and support that they need. Whereas programs like the Hope for Haley Foundation, a local organization, raises funds to support suicide prevention programs, which are important for all year round, for all year round. Suicide Prevention Awareness Month provides a dedicated time to come together with collective passion and strength around a difficult topic. We can all benefit from honest conversations about mental health conditions and suicide because just one conversation may save a life. Now therefore being resolved that Brookhaven Borough Council hereby proclaims the month of September twenty twenty-one to be Suicide Prevention Month, resolved this thirteenth day of September twenty twenty-one. An motion to accept, to adopt a progress.
Make a motion.
I have a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That's all right. You can vote too, Charles. So. Before we begin public discussion, I'd like to invite the members of the Hope for Haley Foundation up to the podium. Come on up.
Sean McKenna, forty-nine fifty-six Madison Drive. Just wanted, I want to go back to July eighteenth, this past July eighteenth. We had a, we had a benefit fundraiser car show here at Borough Hall benefiting the Hope for Haley Foundation. Most people who know me know that I'm very close to this foundation, and there are, you know, some very personal reasons behind that. And I just, I want to, there's some people I want to thank from the borough who really helped to make it happen. Basically, we were going to do this in twenty twenty, and, or with COVID and whatnot, we weren't able to do it. So I reached out to Terry, I guess it was this past February, and I said, Terry, I need a place to do this, you know, I don't want to, you know, go somewhere where they charge us thousands of dollars and whatnot. I need to make money for this, raise funds for this foundation. Because every dollar taken out is one less dollar that goes to help kids and adults. So Terry arranged for us to use the property, helped me a lot with behind-the-scenes, you know, logistics to make it just an incredibly successful event, from public works dropping off barricades to the ice, you know, situation and just, Terry, Terry just helped out amazingly. Sherry was there that day. Sherry was helping set up chairs, helping, again, with all the logistical stuff that we had. Donnys showed up and supported us, as did Hector. It was just, it was really, you know, council support was really awesome for this, you know, especially considering the fact that, you know, the Hope for Haley Foundation is based in Swarthmore. But there's no dividing line for this foundation. Doesn't matter if these kids are in law from Swarthmore or Tarrant, Pendelco, you know, these are. The foundation is just expanding. It's expanding power. And, you know, I can't, I just can't put into words how much respect I have for these two fine people behind me, who out of a tragedy that most of us cannot even begin to imagine, are doing the work of trying to save other people's children and their families from going with their own. And I, I support them ten thousand percent. I always will. I also want to thank, you know, we have two chiefs here, both of them, Chief Vice, he was out that morning, or that, that day, most of the day. He was just sworn in on Thursday. He hadn't even done his first shift at his desk yet. And here he is at this event, which, you know, the borough supported, but it wasn't technically an official borough event. And, you know, it was just wonderful that he was there, you know, supported us in this endeavor. I also want to thank Chief Montella, who I didn't expect to see that day because I know he was out fighting fire at three o'clock in the morning, you know, whole house in gulf. I didn't expect to see him. And all of a sudden I called to Terry and he said, why don't you want to say hi to Chief? Oh geez, you know, you know, Chief came out and supported this. And, you know, from my experience, in, in, you know, with my experience that brought me to the Hope for Haley Foundation, I developed a whole new respect for these men and women in this field. Because, you know, I, I was at a place at a time due to fate, you know, it's twisted fate, and these, these folks, that's their career. They get the call. And I can tell you right now, I couldn't do it. So, so much respect to those, to our first responders, you know, in this town and in every town. I just wanted to say that. But, you know, again, and Howard was phenomenal as well, just anything we needed. So I just want to personally, as a resident here, thank everyone who was involved in making that day, but lots, a lot of.
Our pleasure, our duty.
There was, there was a lot of, it was a lot more than just raising funds that day. I believe there was a lot of healing for a lot of people. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Jackson, five twenty-eight Brymer Avenue, Swarthmore. My husband Kevin and I just wanted to come in person. In front of all of you.
In the bottom of our hearts.
Four is not too good, though.
Rolling out the red carpet for us to all in a day that was nothing short of spectacular. And of course to Sean McKenna for organizing this. And it wasn't just a car show. It was about healing and sending a message to people that there are people who care. And all of you who were there that day or behind these scenes, show that, you know, forever. So thank you. There was a little dessert to go in towards that. And I'm sorry, it's not much, but it means the world to us. Thank you enough.
It's our honest pleasure, Detective. Thank you all. It was Kevin Jackson, five twenty-eight Brymer Avenue, Swarthmore. He's a non-resident. All I can say really, I mean, we were simply overwhelmed that day with incredible love and healing that took place during this tremendous event. Sean McKenna was instrumental in a division that supports the automotive groups around Delaware County and has branched out to other counties to do this tremendous event and our local K-Boo, Borough, and everyone that was in attendance really just hot and hot with me this day. Thank you all very much.
We know what you're doing.
Don't give the details to me, though. I'll take away.
Thank you, everybody. Is there anyone for public discussion? Come on up, sir.
My goodie, Walt Patrick, thirty-seven thirty Arlington Avenue. And I had sent in some questions, some items to be answered, and I didn't know whether you wanted to, you know, just go through them or how you would like to handle it.
Absolutely. Mr. Catania can go, can go wherever he's standing with this.
All right, first, the first item was had to do with, you know, Mr. Grant coming out, working with the builder to get us to a point where I think the builder is going to come back and take care of the COVID related issues associated with that. So that's a good thing. Two questions, you know, about that. Is it for our specific thirty-seven thirty Arlington, is it possible that those code items could be added to the requirements for final U N O so that the builder would know that he needs to complete those items to get that U N O?
I believe that Kevin, Mr. Catania is better qualified to answer that question. Charles?
Yes.
That was a good answer.
And that's good. So, and on the U N O part of it, you know, I know that we're still working to get that done, but is there any idea of what timeline is to get that done?
Sir.
We have indicated to the builder that time is of the essence, sir. And I believe the builder is here. Sir, would you step forward, please?
Certainly.
You identify yourself for the record?
Casey Lafferty.
Enter the mic, enter the mic, please. The recorder will pick you up.
Casey Lafferty.
Mr. Lafferty, would you care to entertain this gentleman's question as to a specific timeline as to when those outstanding items will be addressed?
Whenever he'll respond to me, let me in his home, we would certainly. At no time in any of this, in any of this process have I ever. This, this stuff was never going, not getting done. I mean, Mayor Leslie, you've known me for over a decade. There's been a lot of really, really difficult stuff in my private and personal life, and it's not for this discussion.
That doesn't concern us.
I agree, but it concerns the reasons why some of the things that Walt has addressed, why some of the times I've been silent, some of the times I wasn't able to get back to him, dealing with deaths and dealing with what everybody else is dealing with right now. So at no point, at any time in this entire process was I ever not going to do these things. I was getting a lot of different information from a lot of different people. I've been working closely with Bob Grant over the last couple of months. As far as I'm concerned, I could be there tomorrow.
Well, I would ask you, you work directly with Mr. Catania's office, and you can certainly, if there's an issue of communication with this gentleman, I would certainly encourage you to have a conversation with this gentleman, obviously not necessarily inside this room, but outside of the borough offices. You're welcome to discuss, and hopefully we're all on the same page with regard to resolving these outstanding matters. And I think we'll all work in the same direction and we all want to get it together.
I will agree with that.
Good enough. Thank you, gentlemen.
Continue, sir.
So actually, that is for the punchless items, and that's, that's very good. So my other question had to do with, you know, getting the final U N O, which is not really related to those specific items. The items that, you know, are needed to be done to be able to move U N O from its present position to a final U N O position.
Where are we at there, gentlemen?
Say, if you're now on the phone with this true boss, I guess is kind of cleaning up the project for Mr. Lafferty. The street restoration is scheduled to be done, I believe, next week.
Thursday, Thursday and Friday of this week.
And then he was in touch with his landscaper to come back and break those jars, compress them and reseed them. He was supposed to get me a date today, but I haven't seen you yet. Do some recreating back there because there's still some bonding area that'll leave. So, you know, Mr. Wilson, we're kind of tied over the nest, since if we want to get these yards to be restored and that, the branch growing, and now's the time to deal with.
Okay.
Yeah, a small one, he'll tie.
All right. When exactly did you move it, again?
Uh, the August fourth of last year.
And that's, and sir, that's, that's our point, borough's point and the residents' point, I think. It's, it's too long. Okay. Whatever's going on, it's too long. I, I've had it the whole situation. So we are, we are, we are working on it, and the builder's working on it. I'm confident in that. It wasn't always.
All right. The other item, I just, it was a small item, had to do with just the question on the trash cost, you know, the trash tax bill. The amount that we paid was, was different than what's on the website.
Far less than what you will actually be paying.
Or you gave a year, correct? No, it's, it's actually was more than what the, the website said that the trash cost was on a yearly basis. So that's my only question.
So that, to me, that's just, I haven't been able to estimate their construction, Charles. How do you, how do you resolve that going forward? Yeah, he's saying his trash deed was incomplete.
That's not true.
That's barely, that, that would be with, with the treasury for office.
And it could be, and it could be maybe the website is just incorrect. It wasn't updated. That's always the possibility.
Okay, all right. All right. I thought it was less, but.
Maybe I'm right. And the one item, and I'm trying to go quickly. I don't want to take too many.
That's all right.
You know, about the top, you know, the topsoil, but it sounds like that's going to be done as part of the, of the U N O file?
That's not quite the answer I got. I, I thought that the topsoil is a little more tricky situation, correct? Based on what's, what's considered acceptable and what is actually acceptable or legally acceptable, what we consider acceptable.
I think what we discussed, or why I mentioned previously, that at the end of the day, grass has to be grown for the yards. So the condition, the quality of the topsoil is up as a kind of, right now it's kind of subjective. We can send it to a, to a lab, you know, I don't know, I shouldn't really choose to, but he's got to get the rest of it. So, you know, that's supposed to happen. My, my conversation today, it sounded like we're on the right path or achieve that.
And the last two items, you up, the swale has to, it kind of goes in with that as well. So, so the last item had to do with the stormwater management, you know, maintenance and, and you know, you know, Mr. Catania, I've had, you know, a number of emails that I don't think it needs to be adjusted. I think that Mr. Catania and I could have a few minutes to discuss it. I could at least come to a, some kind of agreement.
Okay.
So anyway, but I want to thank you for your answers. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else for public discussion? Come on up, sir. State your name and address for the record.
John Frinksky, fifty-two hundred Hilltop Drive. I want to personally thank Terry Heller for what he's.
Now I know what you look like. You're the face.
Yeah, I know what you look like. I've been a kind of a stony to your shoe, I know.
No, it's no problem.
For many months, but I appreciate what you've done. I am assuming you're still on the property owners on either side to kind of get that, because it's already starting to come back.
We are, but that will take a time.
Okay.
And not all that responsive. Public Works will be, we've already a, a high brush number from Tenacol. We should have that this weekend. We'll cut back the weeks that are rolling about and into the street on the right side going down Hilltop there this week.
And I'm on the ward in, on section four in Hilltop, so if there's anything we can do for, some of that property is ours, because it's very convoluted on.
It is.
What down there.
It is.
If there's anything I can do from a Hilltop's point of view to kind of expedite what's going on, or if some of that's ours and we're responsible for it, I'll do whatever I can to help out.
We'll take care of it. It's, it's ugly, though. Five thousand Hilltop didn't do their job. Pipeless didn't do their job. And I, I think there's an H O A involved that didn't do their job. But if I had to drive by, they're, they're upset also.
Yes, it was pretty ugly. Sometimes the trees hang down and hit the cars as they go by.
We tried to drag it out, tried, we tried to get them to take care of their properties, but I don't know, like, a lot of people were upset. So it only cost the borough thirty dollars in gas to take care of it. Small price to pay for this much affordable work with the proprietors.
Well, thank you very much.
A few threats here and there.
Seeing on that, I very appreciate it. It already looks better than it did.
Sure. And Mrs. Spooks and Matt Coughlin. Big help, and Mr. Wilber here. Let's just lock and get them to take care of it for us. We're going to need them. The next steps will be fine, so we'll just build them.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else for public discussion? All discussion is closed. Chief Montella, sir.
Good evening. Brookhaven Fire Company's August twenty twenty-one fire report for the month. One fire incident in Borough thirty-four-nine, fire forty-four mutual aid, five drills, total eighty-four calls for the month, four hundred and seventy fire and rescue calls for the year. We had no loss on property structure or contents for the month. A yearly property danger was two million, nine hundred thousand dollars a property. We had one firefighter injury for the month, one for the year. We had eighty-four calls, average fourteen firefighters, seven hundred thirty-six hours in service, five thousand one hundred three hours per year. Our training was five training sessions, thirty average firefighters, two hundred seventy-nine hours of training block for the month. One thousand six hundred sixty-six for the year. Responded to following incidents in Brookhaven. We had five urban vehicle accidents, three fifty till in Covert, forty ninety-eight Edgemont Avenue, three fifty till in Ridge Boulevard, three fifty till in Lightly, three fifty till in Bottom Mill, and we had one industry struck in the parking lot of thirty-five hundred block of Edgemont. Assisted all land fire company on three building fires, one at E Quirrell, one at Church Street, and assisted on a vehicle fire at ninety-five South Town. Assisted parkside fire department building fire at two hundred block of Avon Road, and assisted Aston Township Fire Department building fire on Old River Lane. We also assisted Chester Fire Department on two building fires, one in Second Penn Street and one on Central Avenue. Assisted Milltown Fire Department, you know, two building fires, one on the Alden Campus and the other one on Bridge Creek Drive. Our monthly training was engine company operations, inline deployment, deck drums and ground monitor operations. This is unofficial information. We did have the house fire this past Saturday on nine eleven at around low at eleven o'clock at night where we found the, they had an accident and fire, fire that had a little stop in the fire. Property damage was basically in the kitchen and the rear, um, boundary area, boundary area. Everybody was safe, I think I heard. As I said, vice leader job was good start. Our ambulance report for the month of August was two hundred seventeen ambulance calls, one hundred forty-one transports, sixty-eight, I mean eighty-eight local alarms, one hundred twenty-nine mutual aid, one hundred sixty more ALS calls, fifty-seven of the DLS, and for the year, the ambulances responded to fourteen hundred sixty-nine ambulance calls. And are, so far, we've only transported one patient out of that month.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief Vice.
Good evening.
Evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir.
The month of August, Brookhaven Borough Police Department initiated or were assigned as all of seven hundred and sixty-three casualties through downtown. Just a few of the no-brain, nineteen thefts, one resisting arrest, two vandalism or criminal mischief for fraud, two disorderly conduct, two narcotic investigations, eight ammo complaints, fifty-three suspicious conditions, one harassment, twenty-seven disorderances with domestic disputes, sixty-six medical assists, three mental health responses, fifty-seven assist other departments, twenty-five alarms, nineteen vehicle crashes, and ten hazardous conditions with fire company calls. For the month, we had twenty-four adult arrests, three juvenile arrests, three warrants were served. The officers issued one hundred and forty-four citations for the month, sixteen parking violations, thirty-five warnings. Just a couple of things of note that I think is, is worth mentioning. The month of August, we were visited by a group, they're, they're called Sisters of United Prayer. They stopped by to pray with and for our officers and to thank us for our service. They provided healthy snacks and they were very, very grateful how they spent with us. Couple of notes of thanks from people I received, words of thanks for Officer Subers for his diligence, and extra attention at the Lowe's for, for, for over nine hours. Our employees were very appreciative of his extra efforts. Also received a letter from Detective Paddock regarding the resident issued their dog that he had helped resolve. I also met with the resident and wanted to express her sincere appreciation to Officers Eastman and Subers in assisting her with the personal family matter. She thought it was important enough that committed me to be personally, and I appreciate the fact.
Good job in the back there, fellas. You're staring at us.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I also want to thank Officer Kelso for his extreme dedication. During the month of August, he was assisting on the police after they had a vehicle pursuit and a firearm was thrown out of the vehicle. Without going into all the details where it was, this area, they were trying to get dogs to come down, and it was real thick muddy, and Officer Kelso went in and ultimately recovered the gun. So I think it's, it goes without saying that there's no telling whether it happened, that firearm ended up in the wrong hands, which it already was. These are just a few of the examples of the incredible work being done by our officers. They're dedicated and always willing to go the extra mile, and I personally want to thank them for all their hard work. In August, there were no issues with COVID and mitigation efforts still remain in place. We did submit an application. It was finalized and submitted for a grant to assist us with the purchase of body cameras for all officers. This is a one-to-one grant, so if we are awarded it, it would be matching funds one-to-one. And I also want to thank Detective Paddock for his hard work and assistance with the preparation and submission of the grant. As far as training, we attended training in the month of August for the Domestic Abuse Project, which was hosted by our department. Training was on the FALI Assessment Protocols for Officers Handling Domestic Disturbances. It's a great partnership that we formed with them. We're grateful for the, yeah, I need the, the training with them. Just a couple of things, I want to make sure we remind all residents that schools are obviously open. Please be aware of the school buses that are picking up and letting off the children. These children are our future, and I'm asking everybody to please take the time, slow down. If you see a bus that is picking up or dropping off children, please stop. We have already had violations since school started, and I'm asking everyone, we don't want to issue tickets, but I'm telling you right now, we're going to. It is, it is a pretty egregious violation, so please be mindful of that. Just another reminder to lock your doors because car doors are unlocked. An easy target for people to enter and take whatever is even there. So that is all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wells, give us the Borough Solicitors Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the Solicitors Report is on file with the Borough Secretary's Office in case any members of the public would like to review it. I have a number of action items from our council's consideration this evening, and they are as follows. Number one concerns the approval of the preliminary slash final land development plan for Popeye's Restaurant situated at forty two thirty six Edgemont Avenue. By way of some brief background, this particular plan was submitted by RSI Brookhaven Properties LLC. The equitable owner of the property was sits on point six seven nine acres. Again, a partially developed land at forty two thirty six Edgemont Avenue. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing Commerce Bank building and construct a new two thousand four hundred and thirty three square foot Popeye's drive-through restaurant on the property with twenty two parking spaces. The Brookhaven Borough Council had granted conditional use approval back on June the second, twenty twenty one, authorizing a fast food restaurant with drive-through window in the C one commercial zoning district pursuant to section twelve sixty point oh three of the Borough Zoning Code. Also, the Brookhaven Borough Zoning Hearing Board, by decision and order dated July the twentieth, twenty twenty one, granted multiple sign and dimensional variances to the developer, accepting the existing freestanding sign on the property which the height and square footage shall remain the same. Again, this particular plan has been reviewed by our Delaware County Planning Commission, the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, the Borough Zoning Planning Commission, as well as our learned engineer, Mr. Charles Cantania. All find the plan appropriate and in conformity generally with the Borough subdivision and land development ordinance. The proposed resolution before Borough Council is conditioned on seventeen conditions. For the sake of brevity, I will not read all those seventeen conditions into the record, but the developer has in fact consented to those particular conditions. And so if it is the pleasure of our council, a motion would be in order at this time to adopt said resolution.
Who wants the motion? I'll second. I'll second. Mr. Girory, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any additional questions? Motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Good evening.
Well, I move on to my second claim of the business. Over the past two years, the Borough has engaged in negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police with the goal of achieving a new collective bargaining agreement governing the terms and conditions of employment between the Borough and its police officers. That goal, which has proven elusive at times, has now been achieved. As a backdrop to these negotiations, it should be noted that many of our police officers have chosen to live and raise their families right here in Brookhaven. These police officers are our neighbors, our community leaders, and our friends. They are, in the purest sense of the word, our hometown heroes. Over the past eighteen months, our police officers have had to navigate the COVID- nineteen pandemic, threats of civil unrest, and social justice protest marches. Through all this and more, they have comported themselves with the highest degree of professionalism, skill, and competence. In short, they are to be commended for a job well done. There are some communities that are actively seeking to defund and dismantle its police department. Brookhaven is not one of those communities. Just two days ago, for the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven, served as a vivid reminder of the quintessential role that police officers, firefighters, and first responders play in our society. And yet during these prolonged negotiations, Borough Council never lost sight of the fact that its ultimate allegiance is to the hard-working taxpayers of this community. It was and remains, first and foremost, on the hearts and minds of council to remain good and faithful stewards of taxpayer dollars. I believe this new collective bargaining agreement reflects this priority. At this time, Mr. President, I will summarize for the public in a brief fashion the salient terms of the new agreement, with the optimal word being brief. Number one, the term in the agreement is for a period of five years, effective January first, twenty twenty, through December twenty first, or thirty first, twenty twenty four. Two, the agreement provides for annual wage increases of three percent for full-time officers, a little less for part-time officers. These wage increases are modest and yet well-deserved by our officers. Three, the agreement provides for an increase in the healthcare contribution made by the full-time officers toward escalating healthcare insurance premiums. Four, the agreement provides for certain amendments to the Borough's police pension and disability benefit provisions, as so recommended by the Borough's Police Pension Consultant in order to provide much-needed relief towards keeping the pension plan fiscally sound. Five, the agreement provides flexibility and discretion to our new police chief in formulating employee work schedules. And six, the agreement converts time off language from referencing days into time off based on hours to reflect the officers moving from an eight-hour work schedule to a twelve-hour work schedule. So, Mr. President, again, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order at this time to ratify the new collective bargaining agreement with Lodge number twenty seven of the Delaware County Fraternal Order of Police, covering the period from January first, twenty twenty, to December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Who wants the motion?
I'll give the motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I wish to acknowledge the efforts of the Police Negotiation Committee members, Assistant Mayor Leslie, Councilwoman Heller, Councilman Pappas, and Councilman Gilroy. These individuals worked exceedingly well and protracted negotiation sessions, planning sessions to achieve this agreement. Equally challenging, all committee members took the time to become well-versed and well-educated in complex, nuanced, and esoteric twenty-first century contract issues involving pension, retirement, disability, and healthcare issues. This agreement could not have been achieved without their time, talents, and energy. Next item on my agenda, Mr. President, back on August the nineteenth of twenty twenty one, the Brookhaven Borough Civil Service Commission voted in the affirmative to adopt a resolution amending its rules and regulations pertaining to the amount of experience and law enforcement a part-time officer shall have as a qualification for the position of full-time patrol officer in the Borough. Under the Commission's rules and regulations, said amendment must be approved by Borough Council before said changes become effective. I note this amendment has the full support of Police Chief Weiss. So again, Mr. President, it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to adopt said resolution approving the Commission's amendment to its rules and regulations.
I'll entertain a motion.
Sir.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item on my agenda concerns a resolution authorizing a ninth partial escrow release for the completion of certain public improvements by Franklin Brookhaven LLC for the residences at Brookhaven Glen. That is our fifty-five-and-over community that is in construction near the corner of Edgemont Avenue and Radio Lane. Again, we currently have an irrevocable letter of credit from Meridian Bank in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and twenty-eight cents as effective security for the completion of the public improvements. Franklin Brookhaven, by correspondence, dated September eighth, has requested a partial escrow release for completion of those public improvements. That letter and release has been reviewed by Borough Engineer, the learner, Mr. Cantania, and he has recommended an escrow release in the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. And so again, it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to adopt said resolution.
Motion. So I'll give you a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Questions? Carries.
And with that, Mr. President, I can report general progress.
Thank you, sir. Adam, may.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank Councilwoman Heller, Councilman Gilroy, and Councilman Pappas, and our police FOP representatives. For this last year and a half, almost two years, helped the contract negotiations. We got it done, so thank you. It was long and tedious, but we got it done. I am working with our American Legion for our Veterans Ceremony that will be in November. We don't have a date yet. I also wanted to thank Chief Weiss for the autism event that we had with the fantastic young gentleman, Alex Mann. He put on a fantastic presentation for our first responders to be aware of autism. So that was a great event. John, I heard the nine eleven ceremony was wonderful, too. Sorry I couldn't be there. And also, if you see something, please call nine one one. Don't text the mayor. You can call nine one one sooner than I can get to call into the chief or to anyone. So any non-emergencies or emergencies, please call nine one one. Also, stop at all the stop signs. Our officers are out there, whether you're a resident or whether you're out of town. Please stop at those stop signs. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few items. I have no update on the COVID vaccine booster clinic and the flu clinic. However, Giant Pharmacy has reached out to me. They would like to hold weekly, I believe they want it Tuesday or Wednesday, weekly COVID booster vaccination clinics once they're greenlighted to issue the booster shots. So I will have that out for the public as soon as I get an answer. We're probably looking at late October for a start for that. Of course, the federal government can't make a deadline when we need boosters. Giants fighting that, trying to get that, as am I. As for the banner bucket truck that was delayed, as you all know, the original delivery date was March of this year. It's now been pushed back to November. We have thirty-plus banners down mostly on Edgemont or Main Theraphere, but decided that we are going to either rent a bucket truck and have public works do the reinstall, or we're going to have contractors and then just wait until that bucket truck is received. Some of you may see the rat traps that I placed around the borough. I placed five rat traps in random locations due to a gigantic increase in rat complaints. I think the first two years I was chair of Public, of, what is it, Porterville, I received probably one rat complaint at thirty-five plus in the last year. I talked to the state about it, and it's not that Brookhaven is filthy. It's basically, the explanation I got from the state was that the restaurants closed temporarily or some of them permanently. The rats ran out of food, so they went out to seek other food sources, which leads me to wonder why we eat out at all. I've since started cooking at home. My rat traps have caught two moths.
You cook at all?
On top of the rat traps, I guess rats don't like peanuts, but on top of the rat traps, we're installing two owl boxes at two locations around the borough to try and lure in owls, which are one of the rats' natural predators. Wish us luck on that. I should come in with it. Want to thank John Wilber for the wonderful job he did with the nine eleven ceremony, as usual. I only cried myself in the back a few times. It's okay. It was wonderful. We thank the chiefs over here for having their men and women participate. It was a wonderful tribute. And I believe that is all I have. Oh, Hilltop Drive, we talked about it earlier. We are working on it. And like I said, when we hired Mr. Coppel, we hired new codes enforcement officer, we made it clear that we were going to attack light and we were going to attack property issues. They don't always get resolved overnight, as you know. We're going to work on Hilltop and we're going to, we'll cut it ourselves, as we mentioned earlier. And we will work on maintenance plan with the five or six property owners going forward. That's one of a long list of properties in the Borough that are on. I almost forgot. I also need a motion to approve the August second, twenty twenty one council meeting minutes.
My pleasure.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the August twenty third, twenty twenty one council meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Ms. Sowinski?
Thank you. We do have some bills this month to pay. And the general fund is sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. Sewer fund is twenty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. Road fund is eighteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-five cents. We're a total this month of one hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-five cents. So I'm making a motion so we can pay these bills for this month.
Make the motion.
Ms. Sowinski has the motion. Mrs. Fuchs, you want to make that second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Any opposed?
Okay, the next item we have, this month is always the month we have to do our MROs, which is minimum municipal obligation for our police pension and our non-uniform pension. So for this year, going into what we'll put into budget for two thousand twenty-two, for the police pension fund, it is three hundred and thirteen thousand, sixty-eight dollars. So I do need a motion, making a motion, but we do need to pass this motion so that I can send these out tomorrow to the gentleman at Anderson.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any question? Motion carries.
Okay, the next one is non-uniform pension fund, which is people who are full-time employees who do receive a pension and are retired. The total for two thousand twenty-two The total for 2022 is $32,705. So I do make that motion.
I'll take the second.
You'll take the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions? Carries.
Okay, the last item I have, which probably will raise some interest, is the 2022 budget. Now, when I hand it out tonight is the schedule that we're going to be using this year and the preliminary budget for the general fund. It's not complete yet, but that's why I put it there. And I do have at the end of the year, look at page 11, you will notice that we do have the American Rescue Plan funds. Now, just to explain a little, American Rescue was the federal money that we've received, which is $421,000, for this year and next year combined. So what we're doing is, we're purchasing two police cars, because two of our cars were really not operational, and when they come in, I talked to Chief tonight, hopefully in the next three to four weeks, I'm hoping, we'll get them on the road before the dead winter comes. But we have targeted about $80,000 for those two cars, because they will be outfitted with a police package, and we're going to get the warranty, the five-year warranty, so at least if something does happen, it'll cut down on our repair bills. Because our repair bills get horrendous for police cars. So I just want to let you know, we're trying that, yeah, we're trying that to cut down on our money, but we hope it's going to work. Okay? I think it will. And the other items for net, that'll be what we're doing in '21 from that money. In '22, we're doing utility truck, the gym ventilation, the garage update. Our garage is having major repairs. It hasn't been worked on in over decades, and it's going to be updated. They never had heat and hot things, so we're going to fix it, so they really can deal with it down here. And then there's a storm work in his program for next year. And then what we'll do is in 2023, we will get another check from Washington, and then we have to decide what '23 and '24 will be. But how we had to do it this year is to explain to the council. If you looked at the budget that I gave you, there'll be nothing in the budget for police cars, because we haven't put it on the line from American Rescue. American Rescue has its own budget gauge, okay? Because that is how they want us to handle this. We had to pull, the things for 2022, we pulled out items that would have been in the '22 budget, such as the repairs, to, the garage, the ventilation in the gym, and the sewer, storm work, and also the utility truck. So we had to totally take them out of budget, put them into this budget, because this budget is being paid from the money that's in our special escrow account from American Rescue. We can't come and open money, so that's why it's in a special account. So I just wanted to explain that to you. And we will be, if you follow the schedule, we will be dealing with the budget almost every week we have in the whole. And we do have a general, December 6th date as a adoption, because with a new schedule, we're going to do it. It'll be, I think it'll be a lot more, we try to make it a little more organized, easier for people, so you will be getting information. But this is, as I said, the preliminary, it's always preliminary until it's the final budget, which is this.
Do you have that budget meeting?
We're going to have a problem next week. We had, so a lot of it I had to get this together, which was really extremely time-consuming. And then the time it took us to get the American Rescue straight down, figure, because we got two packets of 50 pages each, single space, and we had to go through that, and it was really a lot. And we had to make sure we were doing all forms, because there's, like, October 31st goes to another batch of forms on the computer, and it has to go to Washington, so it's a lot more work. So I just wanted to keep, and you will be hearing every time we meet, I'll keep you in here, on today. And the next meeting, we have a meeting in October 4th, we will have all the budgets for you, so. And I will be talking to, yes, my dad, not Hector, and, he wasn't here, that's, it's turning off.
It's all right.
Because you sit together, that's why. But we'll be having a meeting probably in the next week to 10 days. We'll schedule maybe on time, and I'll have to lie in the combat, if you bring news. That's all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Great work, as usual. Ms. Fuchs.
Thank you. The ordinance committee will be in email this week instead of in person, so if you don't have anything else you can talk about, I just want to keep everybody in the loop with things. Copies of the food truck warrants are in the back of the room, for those who are thinking about deserving one in the future. If you're just wondering what our ordinance looks like, please dial from the back of the room. The Providence Animal Center's chip vaccination clinic was held on September 7th, and was, again, a success. Thank you, Harry, for being here and making sure that everything went smoothly, I appreciate it. I will get a brief report from Providence on the number of dogs and cats who weren't here for the clinic, and how many were vaccinated and how many were chipped. November 13th is our Shred and Electronics Event at, from 9:00 AM till noon, at Auburn Elementary School's parking lot. Please remember to bring your proof of residency, because we will be checking this time. We have a family day meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 PM here at Borough Hall, and I wanted to also thank John for the 9/11 20th anniversary ceremony. It was really great to see 70 and 10, signifying the importance of never forgetting the lives that were lost that day, and how that day has changed our lives. Thank you. That's all my report.
Thank you, Ms. Fuchs. Mr. Vaskis is at work. Mr. Pappas, sir. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Hilltop residents will notice the repainted road surfaces in the area for fire hazards. The purpose of the repaint was to emphasize the prohibited areas. Also, the Borough Workshop Safety Meeting was held on August 31st. The good news is to report that there were no vehicle accidents belonging to the borough nor other personal injuries of the employees. That's my report.
Thank you, sir. It doesn't require a motion, but once again, as we always do, I just need council's approval for Parkside Store Saw that the Brookhaven Saw Store carried in Parkside. It doesn't have to be done by a motion.
Well, I think we usually do just sort of, because we do sell to Parkside, since they're usually too small.
So much, it's a motion. Ms. Selwick, you can miss on me as the motion?
I'll second.
Ms. Fuchs has a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Ms. Heller?
Thank you. I want to start by thanking the Fire Department, Police Department, Emergency Management, which is Steve Schultz, as well as Public Works for all their prep work for the hurricane tide that comes in February 1st. We're very lucky that it didn't impact it as much as New Jersey and some of the other surrounding areas, so I want to thank them for all the work that we do ahead of time, making the notifications to all those in the flood area. The Police Department's doing the same thing, and keeping an eye on everything, trying to make sure it's okay. The Town Watch met on May 8th, December 3rd, so again, I want to thank John and all the members of Town Watch, they worked very hard on that service, and I feel that we did such a great job, of course, so thank you, John and Town Watch. I want to thank Chief Weiss and Chief Montala for being keen speakers, as well as making us all proud, so thank you for that. For Town Watch, they are going to assist with the apple tree, a debt that's coming up, as well as everyone putting in their datebook. The holiday craft fair is going to be November 27th, so please come out and support Town Watch for that wonderful craft fair, help our local businesses around Brookhaven as well. I want to thank Chief Weiss as well, after what the mayor said, on bringing Alex Mann to the Police Department, to the borough, giving a really nice, warm Brookhaven welcome. And like the mayor stated, John Mann did an amazing job training the police on the way it is to have autism, how police officers really understand with someone that has autism, and what they're going through, so someone that may be having some type of anger issue, maybe just about them, so I think it was, I learned a lot, and I appreciated it. I appreciated, you know, Chief Weiss putting it together and really doing a great job with that. And that was held on September 7th. We have a rec board meeting coming up on November 30th, and we still have Family Day tickets available, so please come out for our Family Day, which is September 25th, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Lots of fun, lots of fun. Try to get a dump tag from Mr. Hollar, but there's probably enough, so we'll have to leave it till next time.
Motion to adjourn.
The parade committee will not convene this Wednesday. Keep an eye out for reschedule for the parade committee. Fire committee did meet on Thursday, September 9th. We discussed some finances for this upcoming budget cycle as well. And I want to thank Pastor Ben for his invitation to Borough Council. They have their centennial celebration at Real Church this past Friday, it was very nice. Got to meet some of the previous pastors, and did a lot of learning on the 100 years of the Real Church, so I want to thank Pastor Ben for that very nice invitation. Lastly, from the rec board, we have basketball sign-ups still going on. We have all of all, baseball and softball, so please come out and cheer on our youth. There are wonderful activities and events. And I want to thank Chief Weiss, we had some vandalism going on at Sampson Park, and with the help of our wonderful Police Department, we were able to catch the person that was doing it, so thank you for taking care of that, because we do have a lot of young children that use that area, so it was nice to be able to maybe catch one of them, so. That was the end of my report.
Ms. Heller, Mr. Gerber, sir.
Thank you, sir. I don't know too much about that, I have no report tonight. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Britannia?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just going to run a quick report, there's a couple things that the board can't consider. First one is the sewer stream in the land mechanical screen, we received four bids for the installation of the mechanical screen, created from $136,740 to $337,000. Recommend award to William Gane Clean Contractors, and a little bit of that, $136,740.
What's the motion? Ms. Selwick has the motion, and what's the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Motion carries.
Standing the sewer stream in the land, the operation meetings contract is set to expire summer 31st of this year, and I ask council for authorization to bid that contract for two years.
What's the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
4420, 4421 Marion Drive, this is a kind of a capated project for storm surge repairs, and I ask council for authorization to complete those storm surge repairs.
That was actually approved in the summer of 19, and it really never turned over to the incoming council, so we are, at least, very least morally obligated to do so, so. Ms. Selwick, she has the motion, who has the second? Yes, it was, it was approved in 19.
Yeah, this is 20.
I'm saying, we're re-approved. I was just explaining, explaining to the council, reminding the council that we're sort of obligated to do something that was left behind. Who has the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any questions? Motion carries.
And finally, the projects were the renovations to the cameras in the police station, and I ask for authorization to bid that project.
What's the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions? Motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
We have one more. It's, oh, I'm reading it, okay. All right, before I read this grant resolution, Charles, I forgot to ask you, you can't stack this with the DC and art grant, correct? This, for the, for the multipurpose sporting facility?
Well, this is a separate grant program, so there's nothing saying you can't apply for this, because we don't know how successful we're going to be with the DC and art grant.
But it cannot be stacked, right?
You can use this as a matching grant.
Okay. But I can't use it additions, if we're awarded the other grant, that's my question.
You, wow, if we were fortunate enough to get both grants, I think the recommendation would be let's ask for one or other to change, amend the scope of that grant, let's get the money first, and make a warning about it, and how we're going to spend it.
I got you. Just so council knows, I don't know if you all saw your emails, is, the plan would be to use this for the multipurpose sporting facility in Sampson Park, in the event we get that DC and art grant. Whereas the planning grants may be used by the municipality for planning services related conservation, trails, park improvements, maintenance, stewardship, natural resource management, design feasibility studies, and other related planning activities for open space conservation, trails in the park, and recreation facility improvements, and whereas the grants may be used by the municipality for the improvement or acquisition of municipal recreation land or for planning services for activities, and whereas the municipality of Brookhaven Borough, Delaware County, Pennsylvania desires to participate in the Delaware County Open Space and Greenways Municipal Grant Program in order to help fund the Sampson Park multipurpose port, and whereas the Brookhaven Borough will be available and all additional funding needed to complete this project. Now, therefore, made resolved by the Borough Council of Brookhaven Borough, Delaware County, Pennsylvania as follows, that one, the municipality of Brookhaven Borough, Delaware County, Pennsylvania hereby approves the filing of an application for Delaware County Municipal Grant Program assistance, and two, that Borough Secretary John J. Wilward Jr. is hereby authorized and directed to execute and file the appropriate forms with the Delaware County Planning Department, duly adopted and public meeting on this 13th day of September 2021. Who wants to motion? And a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Fuchs has the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can be covered all the questions, no opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Is this the first one we've ever had in Delaware County? I'm in for a rec, I don't remember us applying. The state, we usually get state grants, but I didn't.
For what, you said?
Yeah, for Delaware, the first Delaware county, we got it for rec, because I didn't reverse anything I had ever before.
This is phase two, the first round, it had been three or four years ago. I don't recall, Brookhaven, I don't.
I don't recall the last meeting here.
Well, I don't either. That's good, we're able to fly from here. Thank you.
What was the amount of this?
$248,000. So $250,000, no match required.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Let's go.
I lost my ear. Mr. Lesz, sir.
A couple things here. Sergeant ordered the fire prevention material for schools, daycare, for family communities, and the Family Day. That stuff's slowly coming into fire, has a lot of them up for all parties involved there. Chief mentioned that Janie Adams fired at 11 o'clock at night, that was an unattended cook-in. And people just moved in, and they weren't even unpacked yet, it's terrible, they lost their whole kitchen, it's terrible. So, fire's a bad thing, and next month starts fire prevention on October, so check your smoke detectors, please. That's the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gavin is not present, brings us to the second public discussion session, is ready for public discussion.
Quickly, I have a Peloton class tonight. Tom, Alex, three, five, where the camera, Haven's Recreation Board. As stated, we are having a meeting on Wednesday for the Family Day event coming up. We're working to finalize some plans, they're coming along pretty well, I don't remember what the faggot's going on. We have one this Wednesday and one next Wednesday, and Family Day is the 25th, it's only a week and a quarter, a week and a half away.
From Saturday.
A week and a half from Saturday. Lots of fun, lots of other things going in with that. Anyone else who wants to help out and join us, please, if you'd come and join us on those Wednesday nights, doing that. If you can't do that, come Saturday morning at 10 o'clock, we'll put you to work. Lots of work to do. If you can't come at 10 o'clock, come about 4:00 to help break everything down. Besides that with rec board, we are, our next event after Family Day is a dinner dance on October the 8th, it's a Friday night. We did Dylan and Wire Band will be here, and looking for fun for that, and there'll be an adult tonight. It is a BYOB event that night. $15 a person, $25 a copy, so fun time in faggot. After that, we have Trump or Treat on the 31st of October, then we have Golf Corner. 30.
Sorry, it's 30.
30.
30.
And then the murder mystery is in November, as well as Ballad, so looking for that. And then Christmas, all the senior luncheons, the Christmas tree lighting, that's my event. So that's the only one with that, and I'm going crazy, though, that fun stuff. So that's going on with that, and I'm going crazy about that kind of stuff. On a note, also, with the contractor for Arlington Avenue, David Rowe. I know you're talking about operating that, has the manhole on the park area been fixed as far as safety wise? Because it was raised upon a radio. You said?
Yes.
That's me confessed. And also the manhole on this side strip, has that been addressed? I just haven't, I haven't had a chance to walk over there. And we're still working on trying to find out who owns that piece, so if you know that, Mr. Wells, correct?
Yes.
With that in mind, the Recreation Board would like to make a recommendation to council that we name the new park, the Albert and Vada Hamilton Park. The owner, they were the owners of that property. Mrs. Hamilton was a custodian for Corbin Elementary School for quite a number of years. And a lot of the older residents in the borough know the Hamilton family.
There are two other requests to name that park, just to choose.
None of those were brought to the Recreation Board, so we did.
They were just brought to meetings, right? So they have not even brought to council, it's very.
That would be, I'd be able to like to have that.
You know, it's passive recreation, so I don't know if you need to be named it.
Pardon?
It's passive recreation, you know, you pick out a grant from that.
It is a passive recreation, I think, still should have the name in the title of the day.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jess, I didn't understand what you're.
It's not like, we won't have.
There are ball fields or something.
No, it's just a passive recreation park.
I hope it was the first one, because we may, I think we do have little pockets that we own.
We do, we do.
How good that just, that just then?
Yes.
By passive recreation, that's what she gave, she gives, there's no.
No, I understand, but there's also ways that we can, you know, not in the name, but we have these three options. We can also do dedications to the fence that represents that as well, if there's pot.
That's a thought.
I think that's everything I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I'll get there. Anyone else for public discussion?
I have, I have one more.
Go ahead.
I just wondered, Officer Oliver and Officer Wett, who are assistants with Amy's dog, Armani, on the, they ate no class of cameras, so I recommend their assistance with that.
Dog that was very bitey, she's not here, she's been a few times. Cuja. Had a, was a, uh, come here, I'm going to go.
It was a chihuahua.
Chihuahua. Vicious little. Is there anyone else for public discussion? No? Public discussion going on, it's going twice, the second public discussion session is closed. Council, anything else? Mr. Coutany, Mr. Wells, officials, chiefs, folks? That'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night, everyone.